Meeting of the Enfield South Board to order. Start with introductions from my left.
You want to start on the screen?
Let's start with you, Kate.
Okay, I'm Kate Plumlee Stewart.
Tracy Young.
John Claude, Eric Russell. And online we have Alice Kennedy. Alice, can you just confirm that your mic's working?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, I'm Alice Kennedy, hi.
For staff, we have Ed Morris, Town Manager.
And Whitney Banker, and a Tinker.
All right, and I will let you guys know, I forgot to put them out today, but that's your nameplates up in the corner. Should we go and put it outside? Thank you.
All right, we will start with approval of minutes, both public and regular and non-public from November 18th.
I'll make a motion, we approve this printed.
I'll second that. Any discussion? And with a member being attending remotely, we've all votes have to be by roll call. So we'll start from my left with Kate and go through.
Aye, Kate Plumlee Stewart.
Yes.
Yes, John Claude.
Tracy.
Aye, and Alice, how do you vote?
Aye, Alice Kennedy.
Thank you.
Super disappointed that I'm not there to break in my new nameplate.
You're right here.
Point to torch the owl here, so she can see.
She's on.
Oh, good. Can you see it?
All right, we will go to board reports. Alice, why don't you kick us off with board reports?
They're beautiful. Whoever picked them out, great taste. Great, they did their Main Street hearing just this past weekend. Their meeting was all about opening for that. I think they may be looking at some partnerships with the Heritage Commission in town, that's just in very early discussions. And I have heard from the Heritage Commission, they won't be meeting in December.
We are struggling to hear. You did drop out there for a moment. We didn't hear the last like 30 seconds.
Just that the Heritage Commission won't be meeting in December.
Okay. Thank you, Alice. Kate?
The Conservation Commission meets next on December 5th, which is this Thursday at 7:00 PM right here. And folks there, welcome to join us.
Tracy?
The Energy Committee did not meet in November because it was around the holiday. And we're going to meet December 10th on the lower level of the community center as the November/December meeting.
John?
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right, the planning board had another good meeting sort of finalizing the drafts of the potential warrant articles. I don't know if they've actually set the hearing dates yet, but those are coming up soon, in early January, probably. And then, actually, Tim is part of it, went through an interesting sort of analysis of some of our housing in town. People are, there's 2,554 units according to our tax cards, and broke it down to, you know, 1,850 single-family homes and broke it down in a few different ways. So sort of an interesting way to look at some of our housing in town as we look forward. And then, we, you know, we have submitted a second top grant to continue that work on re-rating zoning for stuff. And to try to hit the ground running, they did a, well, Rob coordinated a sort of a request for qualifications, because we don't actually have the grant yet, so we can't do any to start getting pricing in quotes. So we'll be running on that. They got three responses. And I believe at the next meeting, they'll talk to the three respondents to try to be able to make it fast, assuming we do get the grant.
Are there any questions for regarding board reports? All right, Town Managers' Report.
All right, for Staff Report, I'm happy to announce that we have filled our grounds and wide equipment operator positions. So DPW is full-staffed again. And then, just to follow up from last meeting, Federico graduated from the Police Academy and is currently finishing his FTO program. So once he finishes that, we'll have him into a select board meeting to meet with you guys and make him a full-fledged officer. And then, we're also currently accepting applications for the position of AP Payroll Clerk. We've interviewed a few. We're looking at a couple possible others. So you know of someone that's qualified with some bookkeeping-type skills? We'd love to get their resume. And hopefully, we're able to fill that position in the near future. Whitney Hall Public Safety Building, they're still kind of just moving along. We're putting the finishing touches and finish work on Whitney Hall. We do not have a set date for the substantial completion or punchless walkthrough, but we're expecting to set that date soon. The elevator is scheduled to be refinished next week. And we're currently, right now, we're looking at a mid-January move-in date. Part of that was based on setting of the tax due date. As soon as we picked that date and set it, we decided we would move right after that date, so we're not closed when people are trying to pay their taxes. Public Safety Building, the building's pretty much completely dried in. There's plastic in some of the windows. The windows are onsite and they're going in, starting today. So excited to see the windows go in. Insulation was beginning, and temporary heat has been delivered. And they were expecting it to be set up today, and I didn't hear that it was or not. But sometime this week, they'll have temporary heat set up for the winter. So that's good to hear. Rough in electrical and plumbing has begun, and we'll be starting on what they call upper drywall pretty soon, which are in the upper spaces, which makes it a little easier for them to finish rough in, do some of that. They will be, they've prepped everything, and they're looking at pouring sidewalks this week sometime. So Public Safety Building still continues to move along, and it's always interesting to show up there and see what changed this week. A Christmas event, the Town Tree Lighting, will be held this next Saturday at 6:00 PM. We will have treats, music, and the possibility of a special guest. So we look forward to seeing everyone there. Police update, Corporal Smith is scheduled for his first week of K-9 training in April, and he will be introduced to his new K-9 partner in March. That project continues to move forward. And then, the new cruiser was picked up from being outfitted. And the last part of the outfitting process is computer installation that we're currently working on before the cruiser will be road-ready and released for duty. This cruiser is a hybrid like the prior three, making all patrol cruisers hybrid vehicles at this point. We've seen nice fuel savings with these new hybrid cruisers. Good news in the Police Department. DPW updates sewer rates. The Lebanon City Council, just to update you on that, they did approve the rate freeze that we talked about. So our rates have not changed from last year for 2024. Jim Taylor and I will continue working with Lebanon to complete the new equation for the future of Enfield rates. And I, just to let you know, I amended the agenda, so you should have an amended agenda and a regular agenda, just to add the setting of the public hearing at our next meeting for water sewer rates. And we'll get you information on that soon. Pump test on the new marsh well has been completed. Early results show that the first drilled well could only sustain 10 gallons per minute, which is too low for a municipal well. The other one looked good and sustained 25 gallons per minute. The two are hydraulically connected. And we assume, or we've been thinking, that the higher-producing well, if it's permitted, may be able to be permitted for 30 to 35 gallons per minute because they were hooked together. So we'll continue to be working on that, and it looks like we'll be moving to that second well that we drilled. The surplus tractor received 48 bids and ended up selling for $5,400, which was higher than we estimated. And then, the other seven items, the smaller items that we had put together, sold for a combined value of $967. And then, as you guys all know, we had our first storm of the season last week. DPW made it through with only minor breakdowns on some of the vehicles. I would like to thank our DPW team that has spent their entire Thanksgiving bowing our roads to keep everyone safe. And then, from the Planning Department, the master plan adoption hearing will be December 18th, I believe. And if you didn't get it, let me know that Rob sent out emails to you guys with the link to the master plan if you wanted to read through those chapters prior to the 18th. And then, the last thing is we're still waiting on the Superior Court decision for the Laramie Farms' appeal. And other than that, just a short Budget Committee update, we've made it through all of our department reviews. And at the next meeting on the 12th of December, we're going to start digging more into the budget review and the overall projected on what things look like.
Questions, Fred?
When are the taxes going to get loaded into the online portal?
We're working on to it. We're hopeful tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest that they'll be up. Once they get up, we're going to put announcements out everywhere, so.
But everyone should be able to figure out their own taxes, right?
They can, and if they come in, we have the amounts. To people, so.
I did myself a little math calculation, I think I got it.
Yep.
But they honestly, just if you were not somebody whose piece of the pie grew, were surprisingly not terrible.
Really?
We can talk about that a little more in just a minute.
Yeah. I have a question about the emergency services complex.
Yes, sir.
Because I've been asked this question a number of times. We assume, I think, that they're going to be emergencies and vehicles are going to be bombing out of there, right? Is there any thought of any sort of lighting on Route 4 there?
Yes, there will be a fire department light for the fire department vehicles leaving. And the ambulance can get the little remote, too.
Yeah.
After that, we will not have them for the police. They'll be just going out granite ice and riding when they go. But we have, we're working with the state on final approval, but we have gotten approval for that, and we've working with the vendor that'll be putting those up.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions, Fred? We'll move on to the business of the evening, starting with the acceptance of the Department of Safety Joan Equipment Grants. This is a grant that we previously.
Go ahead. Good evening. We're pride, town, police department, for those who don't know me. So we applied for, and we're granted, awarded a grant through the New Hampshire's Department of Safety, J1 Equipment Grant. It covers the entire purchase cost of our new mobile data terminal for the cruiser we just got back from outfitting. The only cost to town for the mobile data terminal will be the installation, which is about $650. The total award is $6,262.
Need a motion one way or another?
Motion to accept the, and authorize the town manager their designees. You actually can all paper with.
Got that, because I'm making that motion. If you want me to say it.
I'll make a little to look at that.
That was secret, right? I can say it. It's a, I make a motion to authorize, to accept the New Hampshire Department of Safety Joan Equipment Grant and to authorize the town manager their designee to sign any documents, execute any documents.
Absence.
As a state.
I'll second that. So again, we have two roll calls with an online, but so we'll just go one by one. Alice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kate, yes.
Tracy, yes.
John, yes.
Eric, yes.
Thank you.
Eric, you're the chair, right?
Yes.
Actually, give me a sign. Give me a nifty palm.
Yeah. Right, press on at the end.
Sure, I'll get back with it. That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Police Department, continue to, great job writing grants. All right, tax rate discussion.
Don't make us wait. We don't want to hold you if you want to be somewhere else.
Oh, no, I want to hear this.
Okay. I love to have you, so that's great.
I'm just sitting out aside until I can keep my focus, not keep you here. All right, your tax rate discussion, we should start. Ed put together some. He knows what, Ed, why don't you walk us through sort of where it came in, 1691?
Yeah, so, middle of last week, right before the holiday, we got the tax rate set, working with the RA. Would like to thank the select board members that ran in and got that signed for us. I did bring the warrant in, Eric, if you want to sign it as well. I don't have to, but it's here. The tax rate was set at $16.91 per $1,000 of value, compared to $29.94 as last year. So like we talked about when we went through the rebound time with the tax rate dropping, things should equate out. As you remember, Norm had talked about the lake properties, mobile homes and condos/town homes kind of taking the increase with other properties probably not seeing a lot of change. That did come to fruition, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. But when I got this, I really, like everybody else, had no clue what that actually meant. So what I did to run numbers, just to kind of show the overall based on averages, was I used the $100,000 value that we like to use in the Budget Committee, because everybody can usually do pretty quick math to know where they fall with that. So based on that, at $100,000 in 2023, with the 2924 tax rate, you would have paid $2,924. At 2024, if we had the 7.9 average increase of the residential properties that we saw, that would change the tax bill to $3,026.89. So 40, 50 bucks, right in that range, about $50, it looks like, which actually equated to a 4% tax increase. Throw Dimitri out there for a little bit. If you guys remember, he went out on a limb at town meeting and said that he estimated about a 6% increase. We always try to budget conservatively, knowing that we can hopefully get some extra revenues and those types of things to pull that tax rate down a little. I'd much rather like to come at this time of year and tell you we got a 4% instead of a 6% instead of the other way around. So with that, I gave you some calculations on your sheet that I handed out to you. That's a little harder to see on that form, but pulling that down and doing a little bit extra work. If you see, the first box there is what I call average properties. I just took non-Lake House properties from across the town. I did list the addresses in your boxes. I won't put them on the, on the screen for that, not that people can't find them. But when I listed them out, the five properties that I used showed a negative 1% increase, 0% increase, 0%, negative 1, negative 1, which really shows that, you know, their tax rate didn't change hardly at all. Looking at the lake properties, it was using another five random type of properties. I will say, for transparency purposes, I pulled a whole bunch of properties, and there were some really far outliers, and I did not use those. I tried to use the middle band. But doing those, there was a 17%, and 18%, and 8, a 7, and a 6, and that averaged out at about 11. Looking through the properties I did, I would estimate that that 11 to 12% is probably fairly accurate on increase. I had Julie do the same thing today for the lake houses and condominiums and mobile homes. They're not as easy to find on our GIS. But doing those, the average condo and townhouse went up about 14%. And then, mobile homes looked like they averaged about 46%. So they took the biggest hit.
Wow.
It's a smaller amount of money, but I'm still sure it's really significant for the people that live in the mobile homes. But a lot of them increased, or the ones we polled at least, was the increase in value was 157%, 149%, 135, and 170. So that more affordable house really increased in value with the increase in the other properties. So that's kind of just painting a little bit of a picture of what happened across town.
Do we think that that's because there's a lot of demand for mobile homes at this point?
I think there's demand for that lower price point.
Yeah.
And so they, they sold for a little bit more.
Yeah, some of the sales. If somebody is in a mobile home in a situation where they get this bill and it's a significant increase, especially versus their income, what they're expecting, I assume they can go through the Department of Human Services and see if they qualify for any kind of.
Yeah, we can look at some things. The one thing the Department of Human Services is not for long-term sustaining, is by giving someone some help to get through. So we can definitely work with some people and see what we can do in different ways. The Assessing Office as well, that's probably a great place to start, because there's some different programs that different people may be able to qualify for to help offset some of that cost. But overall, yeah, it's out there. If people have questions about their taxes or want to see what, what their rate is, Julie at the Assessing Office has a list of every property in town, where it's at, what the tax bill will be. And as we said, tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday at the latest, the electronic file should be uploaded.
And you, I've already saw that you picked the date that they'll be due, which is January.
They're due January 16th. We did that, just giving us a little bit of time with the printers and stuff. We have to give a minimum of 30 days, so we wanted to give a little bit of extra time to make sure that if we had a hiccup in the computer programming or something, we didn't miss that window.
So people want to pay before the end of the year to count on their 2024 taxes?
Facts, yes.
They have to do it before the end of the year. They can't pay on the 16th and then count it backwards.
Yes.
That's one of the takeaways.
Other questions?
December 31st. Other comments on, well, tax rate?
I just want to thank Dimitri for going out on that limb, to be honest, because that's not an insignificant. A lot of work goes into doing that forecast. And I think it is pretty daring. And while we're pleasantly surprised it's lower, I think it was a very, it was a good exercise.
Absolutely, yeah. And it makes us feel good that it's lower.
Anytime we get excess revenue, I'm happy.
I was exactly in the middle. I went up 11.5%. And that's right with what the lake averages are, according to your chart.
Good. There's nothing else there? We can move on to year-end transfer from reserves for sidewalk construction. Good story.
I'm cold. So, again, I'd just like to start by thanking the DPW crews for their work this year on sidewalks. Want to highlight a little bit Jeremy Clay and Ed Tourville. Jeremy Clay had the idea of building the little sidewalks box machine that they had. And Ed Tourville took that idea and ran with it, did the research, and actually made the box that they've been using. So I'd like to just thank those two for stepping outside the box a little bit and working hard to save the taxpayers money. As you remember, in May, we received a quote from Blacktop that gave us a price to pave sidewalks. As we discussed in this, that they quoted $18,666.89 to pave 911 linear feet. Bill? So we were looking at that. We had that discussion when we were talking about whether we were going to stamp and pave the sidewalks or just pave the sidewalks. So we moved into the summer with that number and the $40,000 that had been approved a few years ago for getting those sidewalks done. When, with the quote from Blacktop, we would have been able to pave 1,952 linear feet. But with the implementation of the paving box that DPW built, we ended up spending $37,567.82 to pave 4,611 linear feet. So we got more than double what we would have been able to pave with Blacktop. And, you know, it was, it was actually really nice to see our guys out there doing it. They did a good job once they got used to the machine. And I actually got a lot of comments from people that they were happy to see the DPW crews out there, and they were, you know, joking and laughing and having fun, even though they were paving in really high temperatures. So it was good to see that and just happy that they, they got that done. So we're asking you guys to allow us to move the estimated, up to the estimated, or move the estimated $14,107 with the remainder coming from a capital improvement program, not to exceed $23,500. Just a reminder that the estimated $14,107 is because it's in the trust funds that were part of the fraud issue in the past. And we have gotten a final settlement check from that, and the trustees will be distributing that, and there may be a little interest as well. So it might go up slightly, but we would like to expend the entirety of that fund so we can prepare to move forward at town meeting and get rid of that reserve.
Questions?
I'd make a motion to withdraw the balance of the sidewalk construction capital reserve fund estimated at $14,107. And the remainder needed from the Capital Improvement Program Capital Reserve Fund, not to exceed $23,500, to equate to a total amount of $37,567.82 for sidewalk construction.
Second.
Discussion?
We'll put a second motion at another point to dissolve the fund. Is that how it works?
That has to go to town meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, we, that's, so that'll be a motion that we'll put on the town meeting.
Yeah, we'll put a warrant article in the town meeting for that. And we can discuss that at the proposed warrant article.
Right, good. No, they did an excellent job, including I've recently walked many of the sidewalks and also looked at the work they just finished at Whitney Hall. It's good work. It's good work.
It's great that they're getting such good value. It's great. All right, so we'll vote. Alice?
Alice Kennedy, aye.
Kate Plumlee Stewart, yes?
Tracy, yes.
John Claude, yes. Eric, yes. We approved that. Transfer? All right, Community Nursing Program Authorization to Deposit Funds. We have another key generous.
I think this just authorizes the trustees to put their, put the money into their accounts.
Put the money in. This is the money that they've raised, so it's taking it from the trust fund for next year, I assume.
It'll be to deposit the funds in their funds.
Right.
So when we say to have it, hopefully.
We've been taking donations and we give it to them, and they'll put it in some interest-bearing account, yes.
So move to authorize the town manager or their designee to complete any and all paperwork required of the trustees of trust funds for deposit of funds donated to the Community Nursing Fund after acceptance of said funds by the Select Board.
Thanks.
So that's more clarity now, but.
Yeah, I think it's also just some housekeeping and then accepting funds, and we haven't given them the authority to deposit.
All right, so we can, if there's not further discussion, we go ahead and vote. Alice?
Alice, yes.
Kate Plumlee Stewart, yes.
Tracy Young, yes.
John Claude, yes. Eric, yes. Okay. All right, cybersecurity fraud update. Where do you stand, Ed?
Let me see if I can find my paperwork. Yeah. I had it here with the, I don't see it. Oh, there it is, right in my face. So, yeah, I've been, the majority of what I've been doing working on this was working with our cybersecurity insurance company. It's, it's kind of funny, there's so many people involved in this. I was talking with. It's kind of funny, there's so many people involved in this. I was talking with our insurance company who got us involved with the, I, that Adam Group is the cybersecurity. Fraud people that look into that side of things. And then there's another company, Beasley, that's actually the cybersecurity insurance company that. Holds the insurance policy. So I've been working with them the last week, week and a half, trying to just get them all the documentation and updated information. Bank information, all the stuff that they need to do their insurance review. Um, so I've been working on that, but I did have a call last week from Mascoma Bank. And they received a check in the amount of two hundred and, it looks like fifty-seven dollars, two hundred. Or two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Um. Not the four hundred and fifty thousand we were expecting. They have reached out to Bank of America to see if there's any funds coming back, but what they did tell me is a lot of times. The amount of money in the fund that they, or the account that they may account for. Could be used for multiple different frauds, not just ours. So we may, this may be our portion of that amount, but they're, they're looking into it, so. Um. Like everything else has been on this, it's get a little bit of information and then wait and see, because you don't really know what that means until you get some more information, so. Um, that's what we've got so far. Um, I've adjusted my thinking, just. Just to focus that maybe that's all we're getting back and to focus my planning and, and steps forward on that. And if we get some more back, then it's just good news and we can adjust from there. Um, I did talk to the budget committee a little bit last week as we talked about the cybersecurity incident and the. Um, the fact that this just was in the, in the public safety fund allows us some time to maneuver and manage and see if we can. Absorb as much as possible out of the, the fund or the, the. The building fund, if you will, or, you know, it's not good news on any way you look at it, but it does give us a little time and. Ability to, to manage that project as tightly as possible. Um, not that we build any extra money into any. Of these projects, but when you have a seven point two million dollar project, you have contingencies and different things for. Change orders and things moving forward and we'll just continue to manage that. We were managing it tightly to before, but we'll, we'll really tighten the screws up a little more and see if we can't manage as much as possible out of that project. That's really all I have at this point. I did talk to Eric today and said, I'm just going to leave this. Bullet item on the agendas for a while, whether I have an update or not, it's a time that we can add questions and discuss it, so.
Yeah, then I, I agree with that. I think we should just leave it on the agenda for a while. That way, if people have questions, it's an obvious time to come ask them as. If we have an update, we'll provide it. If not, we won't.
Did we learn anything more about where the entry point for the hack was?
I have not heard anything else.
I think the big piece of feedback and concern that I've gotten from community members, because there's always worry that you're going to go over budget on a building budget anyways. But it was about what, what happens if we don't get enough back to finish the building? Like, do we have to go back to town meeting? And ask for more money, because that's a real fear people have.
Well, yeah, we'll have to figure something out. I think, I mean, I would hate to go at this town meeting and speculate what we may or may not need, but. There's, I would say at this point, we just need to see where we end up. Hopefully, we can manage this down quite a bit, um. I think the only funds you guys would have available to pull from if needed would be CIP funds. We're also going to have. Um, some retainage on both projects, which gives us a little bit of money to. To float around for a year or so that we'll be holding after the project's done. So it, it gives us some wiggle room, if you will, um, moving forward and. If we can't figure out anywhere else, maybe next year this time, we might have to be looking at something like that. Um, just give me the opportunity to manage hard and we'll, we'll see if we can't manage enough to absorb the majority, if not all of this.
Are funds which the town receives for the sale of property. Um, are they allowed to be, uh, dedicated to a reserve fund? Or do they just go into the general fund?
They go into the general fund unless voted differently at town meeting.
Only town meeting has that option, yeah.
Right, now they go to John.
So, um, okay.
But it is something to think about if we sell a piece of property and we want to use that.
Why I mentioned it, yeah.
Take it to town meeting and ask that it be set aside for that reason or.
To town meeting or, and it would be a rare thing for this town to do a special meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to need to get there. Like I said, we'll have retaining.
No, to, yeah, to allocate.
So I think we'll be able to get through this project and then we'll just have to figure it out, come back around and. You know, we'll have some money, pretty sure that'll be dropping into fund balance that we can talk about. That would have to be budgeted or allocated as fund balance towards. This project, but, um, we did. Put this money and the Red Loaf money that we got into those CDs. We've made approximately seventy-five thousand so far, and I think we're going to make some more, so there may be. A hundred thousand-ish there. That was extra revenue that was unanticipated and. So we'll look at every angle and we'll try to help the select board come up with the best decision when it's time to do that.
Do we have a firm figure on the insurance yet?
We don't, and I don't expect one for quite a while.
I guess the other question on the insurance is, I'm going to say if it's only seventy-five thousand dollars and we have to pay. A huge amount to use it and they, they don't pay on the, is it worth using it when you look at what we might pay for an increase on the flip side? I think we should do that analysis, because you, sometimes you put in a claim for a thousand dollars, you pay a five hundred dollar deductible. And then they whack you next year. I, I think that analysis needs to be done, though.
We, we can look at it, but.
We're, we can't pretend we're getting seventy-five, though. I think we have to be careful about how we talk to people about that. It's based on, we need to know what we're going to net.
Well, your discussion is. Of that?
Not of that, but on the side, how close are we to hearing about the audit?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check with the auditors to see when they think they'll release a draft. We should be reaching out to them. As soon as they got done, we were pushing them in D R A for tax rate, so now it's time to push back for an audit.
Our last item is the set of the water sewer rate hearing for December sixteenth. It's just, uh, that evidence is set there, right? We can set our rate.
I didn't have a chance to look at it today, but Jim's done his analysis and put forward a proposal to me. For rate setting, as I said, after I get a chance to look through that and talk to him, we'll get that information to you guys prior to. The meeting and we'll also put it online as soon as we know, so people can look at that before the meeting. But we can definitely propose it and talk about rates at the public hearing.
Do we need a vote to set public hearing?
Please, needs a grain, huh?
Yeah, I would do a vote, just.
That's a motion to set a public hearing for the setting of water rates and sewer rates for December sixteenth.
So moves.
Second.
Okay, you will roll ball vote, Alice?
Alice, yes.
Tracy, yes.
John, yes.
Eric, yes.
All right, we'll have a public hearing next, uh, and this is a good time, uh, now that we voted to do it. But I will be remote next time, so John, as the vice chair, I'm going to ask you to, to, uh, organize the meeting and, and chair the meeting.
I'll be on my best behavior.
Thank you. I waited until after we set the hearing before. I will be able to call in, but I will still be traveling.
For a warm climate?
Uh, Texas, yes. Yeah, San Antonio. All right, uh, that concludes the business of this evening. So we are on to public comment. Any public comment this evening? Not see any hands up in the room or online, uh, so other business. Is there any other business for tonight?
We need to, per suggestion, come up with a time that we can have a meeting for.
Yep. I was going to suggest.
You may do it tonight.
That we do that tonight, or start that tonight, uh, so we finish, uh, if people are amenable.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Sure, please start.
Oh. I don't know that that was on the agenda, though. What is that?
What is that?
Oh, um, just a, a planning board alternate application.
Oh, Jim Bonner?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yeah, I forgot to put it on the.
It's not on the agenda, but it is in the packet, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, here's the long history.
Yeah. Yes, we have an application for a planning board alternate member, Jada Bonner. He's been an alternate for years. Have a good job. That's a motion to a point. Jada Bonner's planning board alternate. I so move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Alice?
Alice, yes.
Thank you.
Tracy Young, yes.
John Claude, yes.
Eric, yes.
Then we'll, Jim will continue. But there's no other business this evening, um. I do think it'd be a good evening to, to a non-public regarding the town manager's contract renewal. Discussion?
Before we go into a non-public response to something that you wrote, John, at some point, did you want to review the solid waste ordinance?
I thought it might be interesting. I mean, I, I read it, it seemed to me unnecessarily complex. And, uh, and are, are we in fact able to enforce all of it? So I, I think we should look at it. So perhaps.
I did send that forward to Vinnie, our health officer, that he has to enforce that, to look at it.
Yeah.
And then he will be working with Jim and Rob after that.
Right.
To go through and I'll probably run it through the police chief as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it does seem a little out of date, because it, it's not up to snuff with the distribution of the containers.
Right.
Right.
When I think, uh, way back, I talked to Ryan about the fact that a lot of the stuff that was listed was. Specific to the person, not the role and specific, it didn't reference the contract, right? So it's like really. Um, it's a policy you either have to review annually or really keep track of, and I don't think that's a good thing. I've used it to look, to look things up a few times, but it definitely has a lot about David information.
Yeah, it's, it's not listed as one of the ones that gets an annual review. We could make it that way, once we look at it, if you want.
Or we could simplify it so it doesn't need it.
I was going to say, you need to be careful. You're going to be reviewing them all every year, but we should rotate through them all every so often.
We should probably have a sched, like actually a schedule.
Started making a schedule quite a few times and I get busy and I stop making it, but.
Because it's one of the least fun things to do.
And I also determined our prior health officer was enforcing that order.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was active and being.
Well, and it's still being enforced. There's, there's nuances and, you know, some of the things that people think might be. Some of it was in there and some of it's like really in that gray area and that's. How enforceable is it? And sometimes it's a lot easier to just try to work with people and get it picked up than.
Right.
Trying to actually see iron fist and get it.
Yeah.
Into that, but. We will be moving through that. He's reviewing it at this time and something we'll bring back in front of you once we get first staff.
It could possibly have some budgetary impact as well.
Probably very little.
I'd like to review it and then we can have that discussion.
Any other business? Not, if people are sort of, it's a motion to enter into a non-public session under the terms and conditions of our S A ninety-one dash A. There's some poll in there.
Call in three.
Discussion of. Town managers. Time managers.
Uh, three, two, yes, A, nailed it.
So I so move.
Second.
Okay, uh, so we will, we'll roll call votes, starting with Alice.
Yes, Alice.
Kate, yes?
Tracy, yes.
John, yes.
Eric, yes.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate you coming. We're going to go into non-public.
Assuming you guys don't want me.
Yeah, we don't need to.
Nope. Are you going to go over Comcast price changes?
Uh, no, that's just an informational item.
What, what is it?
Uh, I'm happy to write here, Comcast sent us.
Yeah.
Sent us a communication, just with what their pricing is.
We're making all the town, for all Comcast, I'm going to be told. They change their, they change their prices five to six times a year. They change it all the time and we just feed the information. We don't, the informational items on there, you know, talk about, they're just in the package for them to look at.
Oh, okay.
I just know that it never goes down.
Have a copy.
There you go, I think it's ten pages.
You can recycle.
You're welcome to have it.
Oh, nice. Now I can read through it, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can be amazed that they have.
Do it right before bedtime.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now we have someone on.
Do I need a different link at all?
No, we're going to suppose we might.
You can just click on.
By clicking that, it doesn't.
Really?
No. People.
Yeah.
Do you want me to, well, they reset the recording. That's the other.